Okay, good evening. This is Enid Lapellis. Today is February 18th and the time is 6:02. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those Town Council members and any other staff. So Jen, I believe I heard Jen. Jason?
Jason, present.
Thank you. Dee?
Dee is here.
I knew that. Yep, Sean? I don't, I don't think Sean was gonna make it to this part of the meeting. Are you here, Sean? No. Okay, so he's out. Kevin? Kevin, you here? I'll, I'll call him again. John?
John Formicella, present.
Okay, Tony Scott?
Tony Scott here.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney here.
Yep, and myself. So let me just ask you then. I believe Sean wasn't gonna be able to make this part of the meeting. But Sean O'Rourke, are you here?
Present.
No.
Present.
He's there.
Okay, thank you. And Kevin Reed, are you here? Kevin, you here?
Kevin Reed here.
Alright, so let's, perfect. Alright, so we have nine to zero. Notice, access to this meeting will be limited to joining the meeting as follows. Please refer to further information prior to the end of the agenda. So we've done the roll call, we've done that. So we're up to joint discussion with Board of Finance regarding the fiscal year 21, 22 budget. Mr. Mandros, you here?
I am here, Enid. Thank you for having us. I think I got, our entire team is here as well, so we're all happy to join.
For the record, you should take a role with us.
Okay. Well, you know what, Mr. Mandros, can you take a role? Because it'll all be recorded anyway.
Mike Mandros, I'm here. Steve Kirsch?
Here.
Jonathan Szevsky?
Here.
Dave Shafky?
Here.
Rebecca O'Donnell?
Here.
Adeline Wells?
Here.
Alright, we are all here.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. So Mr. Mandros, you wanna start the discussion with the Board of Finance?
I would be happy to. Thank you again. Thanks for having us all here. Just, I'm gonna recap a little bit some of the history here to sort all up for our new members on our team and maybe on your side as well. So basically, we started doing this probably five or six years ago, after we had a couple of bumpy years where the Town Council was going in one direction and Board of Finance was then undoing some of the things that were done at the council. So we kinda all put our heads together and decided it would be a little more helpful if we were at a cooperative relationship and started doing these joint meetings. So I'm happy we're continuing this tradition because it seems to have worked much better. Just to recap some of the things from 2020, because obviously 2020 was not a normal year in any way, shape, or form, and certainly not on the budget side. The budget last year was left to Board of Finance with the elimination of the referendum. The final budget was put together and finalized in the Board of Finance. Obviously, there was a tremendous amount of uncertainty at the time. We were certainly not having a great feeling about where we were looking at revenues, where our budget might come in. So I really appreciated all the help and support from everybody in the Board of Finance and Ken and Town Council. And I think we did a great job pushing the budget through. But we did make a few decisions that are gonna change the way things operate this year. So the good news to start with is our worst fears as far as collections did not come true. Deb just gave us an updated report and our collections are coming in ahead of where we conservatively estimated. We did do something very different last year and we committed to using a large portion of fund balance, which we had never done in the past. Fund balance was something I never wanted to use for operating budgets, but being the year that it was, we all felt after long discussions that it was the right approach to take. And it looks like it's gonna work out for us. So we will be using some of the balance, but not as much as we had planned originally or thought it could be. I really wanna commend Ken. He's done a great job over the last year, I believe. One, leading the town, leading, constantly communicating with not only the Board of Finance, but the Board of Council, the residents. So everybody was aware of all the changes going on and all the moving pieces. It is certainly not an easy year, so I really wanna thank him for all the support and communication that he's done for all of us. So now we are here. We're in a new budget year. This will not be 100% a normal year, but it's certainly looking better than we started. So obviously, there's still uncertainties, but I think fewer than we had before. I think we've got a lot more experience. We've certainly gotten used to doing remote meetings now. We can do all these things pretty well and we know we can function through them. So we're gonna take a new approach into this budget year, but I do wanna do some of the same things we had done in the past. In the past few years, we left council to really take a look and dive into the departments and the personnel. And I've asked Board of Finance over the last few years, and I will ask you this year, that we don't really get involved in that part of it. I think Ken's got a great operational plan. I think he will discuss it in great length with council. But if council's on board and Ken's on board, I think our job on finance is gonna be to figure out how to fund it, not to undo what council and Ken are doing. So I really wanna take that approach, that I want the Board of Finance to really focus on the finance side. We're gonna handle revenues, we're gonna handle fund balance, we're gonna handle bonding and all those kind of financial decisions that need to be made on how we pay for all these things. But the actual things and the direction of the town should come from the first electment in Town Council. So it's the approach I wanna take. I think it's worked well for us over the last few years. And obviously, it's something we're gonna continue to try to get better at. Board of Finance does review the Board of Ed budget. That does not fall under the purview of Town Council for all the newbies. So, you know, we are gonna be in constant contact with the Board of Ed. Superintendent's been super supportive and very, again, communicative. Ron being over there from a finance standpoint has certainly, I think, helped the communication on both sides. So I feel like that's gonna go relatively smoothly as well. The other thing to keep in mind is I know last year, I felt like I said it a million times, but some of the decisions we made last year, we're gonna position us in a place where we would have an increase that was gonna be probably larger than we were all comfortable with. And I tried to make it clear going in that this was not gonna be an easy year because, you know, we made some cuts last year, we pushed some things down the road that we normally would not have, just to keep a tax rate that was down and in a reasonable level. So we are gonna have a bigger increase than we normally have. And I'm gonna go on the record and say that. In a normal year, I probably wouldn't be getting behind some of the numbers I'm looking at, but I think we're gonna have to figure out how to get through this the best way possible and put out a budget that will get approved by the town, but also taking into consideration that we did make some sacrifices last year that we're gonna have to make up for. And that's just, you know, I said it a year ago, I'm saying the same thing tonight. I don't think it's a change. We still have to make a reasonable budget. We're gonna still dive into every area. I know Town Council will spend a lot of time going line by line, and I think it's important they do. But I just want everybody to expect that, you know, we're not gonna see some of the super low increases that we've been able to achieve over the past few years. I think Ken's done a great job looking at fund balance. I mean, traditionally, some of the budgets we got didn't take into consideration how we use it. And he's made a proposal, which I think is well thought out. We will also obviously discuss it once we know more, better numbers. But I think it's a great starting point. I mean, it's a considerable drop from last year, but still more than we traditionally use. Fund balance is not something we can live off forever. There will come a time when we have to get away from this and hopefully sooner than later. So when we do, or if we do decide to use fund balance again this year, we will look for a plan to come off of it over a couple of years. This can't be an endless cycle. We have to break the cycle at some point. But we do have to get through these abnormal times. So I appreciate the thought that's gone into it. I know we will have extensive discussions about that on our side. And again, we're happy to take input, but I think those final discussions on the revenue projections, the use of fund balance, how all those calculations come into play, probably lies best with finance. And we will do our best to make sure all those numbers balance out in a way that should make it palatable. Where else did I go? I kinda went off my track here, but I do... Okay, so yeah, there are a few more unknowns still. I know we've gotten, we've heard some preliminary numbers coming out of the state. We've heard some preliminary numbers coming out of the feds. We've gotten some preliminary numbers on medical. I would say all of those things are probably best left for another month or two from now. The closer we get to the final product, the better numbers we'll have and more accurately. Right now, things are looking favorable in medical. And again, there will be back and forth on the state. It is always a risk of having some of those fundings cut, but it doesn't sound like that's the direction they're heading in at this point. So I'm feeling relatively positive. I don't get too excited until it's official. But I think there's an opportunity that a couple of those numbers could get tweaked down and again, make the increase, certainly the tax increase, more at a palatable level. I guess the last area I wanna touch on is capital. We did not really end up doing a lot of capital last year. You know, roads are always a big discussion. There are plenty of projects on the agenda. Ken's made a great list. Again, what I'm gonna look for from the Town Council is direction and priority. You know, we'll figure out how much we can swallow at any given time and where the level of bonding is comfortable. I always like to keep that relatively flat. I don't mind taking on debt. I think we need to constantly be improving the town. But we just gotta make sure the math works out, that we can do it. But the prioritization and the approval of that should come from, again, Ken and the Town Council. I think the last thing we're gonna talk about is the mill rate. It is always a touchy subject. We've got, we're experiencing a couple of things that we haven't seen in a long time. One is a booming real estate market. It's been a while since we've seen that happen in Monroe. So again, that might not affect us immediately, but down the road, that will hopefully help us manage that mill rate. I do get concerned because our mill rate is 35.48. I've been doing this a long time, but that's a big number. Our neighbors are similar, so, you know, Trumbull's 34.74, Newn Town's 34.76. But there are also a lot of towns that are considerably less. So it's something we do always have to keep on our radar. It's the most direct effect that it has on taxpayers. So the mill rate is the most important thing from my standpoint that we're gonna look at finally and make sure that we're not putting something out that's at a crazy level. So I think that's about all I had to start off. I would certainly open it up for John or anybody else on my board or however you wanna handle it, Enid, on your side. Questions, concerns, what you're, you know, how you guys wanna attack it this year? And if there's any issues with what I'm proposing, please bring them up now.
Well, we can take, in other words, if someone from the Town Council wants to say something, just let me know. And if someone from Finance wants to say something, just tell Mike and we'll take turns speaking. Okay, so anybody, so anybody from the Town Council have comments about what Mr. Mandros just said?
Madam Chair?
And, yes, because you have to tell me because I'm just totally remote.
It's Jason Maurer. Just one quick question for the Board of Finance, because I know there was some confusion last year when we did discuss capital. Do you want us discussing the capital in our various workshops with the departments ahead of time to be prepared for the capital discussion with Board of Finance? Or are we going to discuss it with those departments come that joint capital meeting?
I mean, if you guys would do the legwork, I would love that. I mean, I have no issue with that. I would love the projects to be, you know, kind of gone through with a fine-tooth comb before it came to us because, again, my approach is, you know, we're looking at it more from the monetary thing. If council's in complete agreement that a project needs to get done, then in my opinion, it needs to get done. And we just gotta figure out timing and how the best way to pay for it is. So I would, I would be super supportive of that if you guys are willing to take that on. I think that would be great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, so anybody from Board of Finance who wants to speak now?
John, you wanna?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Enid. It's Jonathan Szevsky, Board of Finance Vice Chair. So I totally agree with everything Mike has said. We have a few challenges, but nothing like last year. I think these joint meetings work really well. It puts us all on the same page as we go forward. It's no fun trying to reverse the work that you guys do because you put in a lot of time and effort and do a lot of work. So we wanna actually leverage that and move forward with that as we go through and look at just the financing of it. I think that makes perfect sense that you take the lead on prioritizing things and making sure what's getting put out there as a budget to the town makes sense for, for services and the like. And we pick up how to fund it and make sure it's affordable for the citizens in the town. So thanks very much. Look forward to working with you.
Okay, so thank you, John. Anybody from Town Council have comments?
Enid, it's DeeDee.
Yep, yep.
Mike, do you, how you doing? Do you have any, or do you, what is the fund balance right now existing?
I know Ron just did some analysis with it. Now, the problem we've got right now is we had budgeted quite a bit of it, but don't have a final number. But if Ron, do I see Ron here?
Yeah, Ron has a projection for...
He's got it mapped out.
Yeah, so the general fund unassigned fund balance is 6.8 million right now. Now, the, the problem with that is we assigned fund balance in the budget last year of 8 million, which we're not gonna be using all of, so some of that will roll back in to the fund balance, DeeDee?
Okay.
If that makes sense?
It does. Of the 8 million, about how much is coming back?
Right now, we're projecting that, let's see, tax, we're projecting that about 4, 4.5 should come back.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Perfect. Thanks, DeeDee.
Anybody from the Board of Finance wish to speak now?
So Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. I wanna go back to something Jason said about capital and maybe get a clarification from Mike. Are we, is the Board of Finance gonna be solely responsible for looking at capital projects related to the Board of Ed? Or are you suggesting that the council be looking at those as well as municipal capital?
A great question. I mean, typically, the Board of Ed has kind of addressed their own capital things. I don't think the Town Council has typically gotten involved in those over the years. I might defer to Ken on that as well. But typically, they bring those projects to us when we discuss their budget.
Okay, so that was one point of clarification. Thank you. The second thing that I would like the Town Council to look at, and I'm not clear from what's in the budget from what I've read yet. And that is what is the status of the reorganization of the Finance Department, which affects both the municipal side and the Board of Ed side? And what numbers, if any, from that ongoing process are included in this budget? And what risks are there based on where we are in the budget cycle compared to where that analysis or planning effort is? So that's one item. Another item that I'm interested in that I didn't see specifically, I saw in the presentation from the first selectman about the number of dollars for roads. But my question is, are we planning to do another road condition study at the end of this calendar year, the end of this section? It will have been another three years since the last study, last survey was undertaken. And I'd like to ensure that that gets discussed. At a minimum, that gets discussed and hopefully in the budget to do. And so I hope the council will discuss that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Anybody from Town Council now? I was gonna make John Formicella the parliamentarian anyway. Do you see anybody from that side, John? From Town Council?
No, it doesn't appear that anyone...
Nobody's lit up yet.
Okay, Board of Finance?
Let me just jump in for a sec, Steve, just so I can maybe help. The Finance reorg, I think, is going to a subcommittee of council at this point, so they will be working on that. And by the time, we should have some numbers put together by the time it gets to us. But they're gonna look at that and review it because it has to come from council. And I agree with you on the roads. I think that's a great, you know, certainly a discussion and we should have a schedule for that reevaluation as well.
Yeah, I could just jump in real quick. Ken Kellogg speaking. In regards to the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, trying to pull up something here on my screen at the same time. In regards to the joint finance discussion, I know that we're, we're working diligently to put together some final information for both the Board of Education and the Town Council. The superintendent of schools had advised me that he had a couple of Board of Ed members that wanted to be involved in some of those discussions before it went to the full board. So I am in the process. I am gonna be reaching out to, I was gonna reach out to the council chair as well. Enid, you talked about having, it would seem like the committee would probably be the most appropriate committee for Town Council to engage with that as well. And so those conversations will be happening in the future. I think we're trying to get that done, you know, by early, early March at the least. So that's, as far as the Town side budget.
Someone has to mute their phone or computers. So go on, Ken, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that is a, that is currently in the budget on the Town side as, you know, flat, no, no, nothing incorporated because nothing's been proposed yet. But, you know, our initial analysis has shown that there's not gonna be, you know, there would not be any major impact on the Town side is what we're seeing. As far as the road, the next schedule for the four-year, it's a four-year evaluation, so we've done it in 2010, 14, and 18. So the next one would be due sometime in '22. And so that's when we would have Public Works, you know, go through the process of procuring that and getting that agreement through council and getting that scheduled again.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on either side? Because what I propose is, we have some time. I'm gonna go on with the regular Town Council meeting. If someone stops me at a minute to seven, you know, we'll, we'll keep on going. Hopefully, we can finish the Town Council part of the meeting. If not, we'll come back after the public hearing. But at seven, I'll start the public hearing. But I think if no one has any comments from Mr. Mandros, then we might as well go on and look at the rest of the council agenda. Okay, so as the chairman, I'm gonna do that.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, before you log off, it's Jen Aguilar. Can I say something quickly?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not, we're not gonna log off. We're gonna go on with the rest of the Town Council.
Before we, before we end this, I just wanted to thank Mr. Mandros for talking about what you said last year. Because I know there's a lot of chatter, at least on Facebook. And we got a, a letter talking about the tax increase. And one of the questions I was gonna ask was, you know, we are getting the letter. I don't know, I don't think the Board of Finance got that letter. I think it just went to Town Council saying how, how impacted residents are with COVID and it's not fair to do a tax increase on top of people losing jobs. But it seems the majority of, and I, I don't wanna assume this, but with tax revenue coming in, it does seem that the, at least the majority of the town is somewhat stable. And I just wanted to thank you for making it clear that you did say this last year. And, you know, the 3.3, I, I was shocked at how low the number is, so...
No, I think Ken did a great job already. So I mean, again, I'm not, you know, I thought it was gonna be much worse, to be honest with you.
Me too.
Yes, and again, I did say it last year and I'm not gonna run away from it because it's just no way we're reporting.
You have to pay the bills.
Yeah, eventually, you always have to pay the money.
Yep. That's it. Thank you, Madam.
Madam Chair, Sean O'Rourke?
Sure.
Mr. Kellogg, could you just go through the, the grand list, breaking it out residentially and commercially for us with regards to the year-to-year-over-year improvement or degradation, however it might fit?
Well, I could tell you certainly that, you know, at a high level, the, the grand list has increased in all categories, residential, commercial, industrial, personal property, motor vehicle. The only decrease was in vacant land, which is obviously, that's probably a, a good thing if you have undeveloped commercially zoned land. So in that regard, you know, it's good news. The, I think you had from my original budget presentation that we did have a increase in the grand list this year. And even with a little bit of, we've got a little bit of extra contingency this year because there is, there's a lot of motor vehicles that we believe were probably sold and we probably are carrying both the new vehicle and the older vehicle currently. So that's a kind of a normal fluctuation, but we think it's a little bit more than, than we've seen in prior years. So that's one area that they wanted some contingency on in addition to the, the norm. And there's also, there's a lot of, a substantial number of the tax appeals from last year, which was higher than normal due to a reval year, that are still outstanding. But that said, even with that increased contingency, we had a just over $16.5 million increase in our, in our overall grand list.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I thank you, Mr. Mandros and your Board of Finance.
No, thank you. Appreciate you having me.
Okay, and I'm gonna go on to the rest of the Town Council agenda or how far we get by two minutes to seven. Alrighty, so the next thing on the agenda is desired workshops, discussion on desired workshops with departments regarding the, the budget. So our meeting with them is not really till next Tuesday. So if I could ask you, if you have looked through the book, I'm sure a lot of you did, if you could just email me a list of which department heads you would like to have come. And we have two nights for that. It may not take two nights, it may. But certainly, if you could just email me, if you can't do it by tomorrow, do it by Monday because they have to Wednesday, to Wednesday, I believe, to the 23rd, to, that's Tuesday. Yeah, no, they have till Tuesday. So good, I could always get to them Monday. They know they're coming anyway. Alrighty, any questions on that? Otherwise, I'm go-
Not sure.
Question, anything? Yeah?
I guess I, I'm, I, I've asked it with your permission if you'd entertain just polling council and they've had time to look at the books, if they could just advise what departments they'd like to meet. I'm happy to start scheduling them, you know, we have a couple of days that we schedule them over, so the more lead time the better.
Madam Chair? Yes, that's DeeDee, I believe?
Yeah, DeeDee Martin. There are three that I'd particularly be interested in, parking wreck, police, and EDC.
Okay, okay. And so me adding on, I want one look at the town clerk and resources. Now, anybody else prepared? But no, if you didn't, you can get it to me tomorrow, get it to me Monday.
Madam, madam-
Go ahead, Jen.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add library to that list.
Okay, and Jason must be the other person?
Madam Chair, and I'm going to preface this with saying the, a couple of these, I only have one short question on. But it's been our- But it's been our policy in the past to not make a motion on a department that we didn't call and talk to. So I want, I just want to ask a couple of these departments. But I have tax collector, senior in social services, the building department, all of the fire, including the fire marshals.
Okay, three fire departments, plus the marshal. Because then Ken and I tomorrow, we just looked.
I'm still going, emergency management, emergency medical, and public.
Wait, hang on, emergency management, emergency medical, and what's the third one?
Public works.
Public works.
And this, this also comes based off of the conversation with finance in that we want to have the discussions on capital ahead of our capital discussions. So some of those departments are for purposes of discussing capital as well.
Okay, alright, anybody else?
Madam Chair, did somebody, I'm sorry, did somebody say parks and wreck?
I did, yes.
Yes, I thought so. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sure I can ask Ken, the administrative assistant, to make us a list. And you can either look at it tomorrow or Monday. I'll ask her just to make a list, if she, so you can see them, just in case there's something else that you wanna look at.
Is there any, are there any other departments, any other input?
I think we got them all covered. Is there anyone we missed?
About 10 of them.
Alright, Madam Chair, with your, with your permission, what I'd like to do is just read off the list as I have it to confirm that I have
Yeah, because I, I-
With the intent, with the intention that I can provide, try to provide counsel by the, as soon as possible, a breakdown of which departments will schedule on which date based on availability and try to load balance the ones that I think-
That's up to to really do. Oh, that's great.
So I have parks and recreation, department, economic development, town clerk, human resources, library, tax collector, senior center, social services, building department, all three fire departments, fire marshal, emergency management, emergency medical services, and public works.
And you missed police.
I said police.
Okay. So, so police there. Any other comments on what Mr. Kellogg just read off? Okay, so that's, that's a, a great idea going on. I'm just looking at communications. Let's see, I hereby ask that communication items A and B be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. Then there's public participation. Anybody there? John, can you see anybody?
Steve Kirsch, please, Mr., Madam Chair.
Sure.
Steve Kirsch, 35 Applegate Lane. For the record, I'm a member of the Board of Finance, however, I'm not actually speaking for the board tonight. First, I'd like to thank First Selectman Kellogg for putting the file with all the meeting dates into the budget folder so that the citizens can see and stay abreast of when those meetings are so that they will be able to participate. Second, I'd like to make a suggestion for your consideration. One of the tools that the Board of Education has used in their budget deliberations was to keep a running list of questions and answers that were directed from the board back to the administration. And they made that public and it was a very, a very good way to see what questions the Board of Ed had been asking and what, what those various answers were. And I think that the public could benefit by something similar being done when you all have your deliberations and raise questions. My third comment is relating to the new munistat agreement. It was discussed at the Board of Finance. Again, I'm not really speaking for the board, I think the First Selectman will. I'm, I'm in support of it, the board was in support of it. And those are my comments for tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Okay, any public participation? I think Mr. Formicella doesn't see anybody.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
I will ask, is there anyone from the public that would like to participate?
Excuse, Madam Chair, it was put out to the public, it was put out to the public that the public meeting was at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, no problem.
If I may, this is the normal public participation regu- related to the normal items of your agenda, not the-
Right. Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry.
We can't start the public hearing until seven.
So we have, though, we do have one more business, new business. Resolution 2117 to consider an act upon the resolution regarding the munistat municipal advisor services agreement. So Mr. Formicella, can you actually, John is prepared. Can you please do that resolution?
Sure. I'm not prepared.
Okay. Madam Chair, this is Jonathan Formicella, I have a motion. I move that the council accept and agree upon the following resolution. Resolution number 21-17, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the municipal advisor services agreement and any associated documents by and between Munistat Services Incorporated to provide services as the town's municipal advisor for matters related to the issuance of municipal obligations. Jason Mauer, second.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you can, you probably got from my cover memo in this regard, we've enjoyed services of a municipal advisor for many years for the issuance of bonds and the related disclosures for that. Back in 2019, we entered into an agreement with Hilltop Securities. That was a change in, in the prior provider and that was driven primarily due to the change by the, the managing principal going to Hilltop and the, our desires of town to retain someone that we were extremely pleased with his level of service, historical knowledge, his institutional knowledge, and, and just his overall, again, overall satisfaction with his services. Recently, the town was advised that Hilltop had closed their Connecticut office. And unbeknownst to us at the time, our contact was no longer there. We've determined that he has, he, or he actually advises to his now with a new firm, Munistat. And they have offered to provide the same services to the town with the same financial terms as were being conducted at Hilltop. So in conversations with Mr. Bonofsky, we, in the same philosophy that we are extremely pleased with his level of service and would like to continue to utilize him. And given that Munistat is an established firm that offers these services, we'd like to proceed with engaging with Munistat. The, we, you know, we, Ron did obtain a client list of Connecticut municipalities that are utilizing Munistat. It's a list of about 50 or so towns. So there's certainly plenty of other towns that are using them. I did discuss this with the Board of Finance this evening. And as Mr. Kirsch relayed earlier, they were in support of this as well. It has been reviewed by the town attorney, who has issued his letter of opinion. And it was also reviewed at LNA at their meeting earlier tonight and was referred by them as well. So with that, again, I appreciate you putting it on the agenda this evening. The reason being that I asked for it to be done as soon as we could is that there is an ongoing disclosure that needs to be done by the end of this month. And, you know, the few extra days in, in terms of doing this now versus waiting for your regular meeting on Monday would just add more time to be able to do this with the individual that we would like to have do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Jay.
Jason Mauer, just, this did go through LNA. Prior to this meeting tonight, we had a special meeting. The only questions there was making sure that there was no issues on double billing, which we were told there is not because the, the fees are only on a basis of as services are rendered. So no services would be rendered by both, both organizations. So there would be no double billing. And also confirming our understanding that the old contract had a termination for convenience clause, which it does, so we can terminate that contract without, without any penalty whatsoever. And upon that, it was a unanimous pass from LNA to council.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, I'll, I'll take a roll call vote. Jen? Jen, you, are you in favor of this resolution?
Sorry, Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason?
Jason Mauer, aye.
DeeDee?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Sean?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Reed, aye.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony?
Tony Scott, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
And myself, aye. So the vote is nine to zero in favor. Okay, so, Mr. Kellogg, we have about 15 minutes before we end this meeting. So, so would you suggest we just stay on the line and do whatever you want and then just come back at 7 o'clock?
I, I would recommend, Madam Chair, that you recess the meeting until 7 o'clock, upon which you can, you know, we can resume the meeting and continue with your public hearing at that time.
Okay. Madam, Madam Chair, I, I believe a second public, I know there's nobody who's gonna participate, but it is on the agenda.
On the top, that's the first one, there's no second one on my sheet.
I was just looking at the agenda and saw it.
The first time it happened, but it's not there. It's right, public-
Okay.
Okay, so thank you.
Oh, I got it, yeah. You're right.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure, please recess the meeting, do not adjourn.
Okay, yeah, I was impressed myself. So I'm recessing this meeting at 7:15, coming back at, 6:45, coming back at 7:00 PM. Okay, all right. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. This is Enid Lapelis, Chair of the Town Council. And the Town Council will conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget during a special meeting of Town Council on February 18th, remotely via go-to meeting. The special meeting will begin at 6:00 PM with the public hearing commencing at 7:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to receive input from the public regarding the proposed budget. Public access to this meeting will be limited to joining the meeting as follows, via computer or via phone. So to start the meeting, I'd like to read a letter from Joe Alexander, who is a citizen of Monroe and a resident. Good evening, I want to take a moment to address the proposed tax increase here in Monroe. While I'm happy to see that our property value has increased, I am not thrilled with the prospect of increased taxes. The pandemic has seen many of us out of work or incurring financial strains either due to medical expense or accommodations to the new normal of how we live now in remote working and remote schooling. To increase the property taxes during this already trying time seems to be another straw upon the camel's already burdened back. With the springtime and nicer weather hopefully soon upon us, residents will not be able to fully utilize our parks and public spaces as we did prior to the pandemic. Residents unable to enjoy the fruits of their tax dollars through parks and wreck other municipalities find the tax increase more of a burden than a blessing. The schools, while burdened with navigating the obstacles of the pandemic themselves, have placed a great deal of strain upon families within the community. Parents who are working remotely in their homes are now tasked with the job of being a surrogate teacher to their children. These bifurcated efforts have pushed many people to new levels of stress with a decreased outlet for it. An increase in taxes is understood when residents can see a service provided that previously was not or to reflect an increase of the town's cost. However, in this scenario, residents are being asked to absorb new responsibilities and to increase our paid tax amount. I feel that, that this may be not the best timing for such a task and asking for the residents of Monroe and a postment be issued. Thank you in advance for taking the time to read this massage, message. Sincerely, Joseph Alexander. I wanted to read that. So the public hearing is now open. I'm asking John Formicella to look around and see who wants to speak or just say, Madam Chair, tell me your name and, and address, I believe, and speak.
Madam Chair, before we move on?
Yeah.
Just for the record, Mr. Alexander, he had asked me to make sure that that was put into the record. I'm glad that it was. And his address for the record is 8 Turkey Roost Road in Monroe.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Mauer. Okay, so anybody wish to start this meeting, speaking?
Madam, Madam Chair, this is Jonathan Formicella. I think the best way to do this is to pay on the interest is to go through the alphabet. Why don't we start with A through E, if anyone with a last name?
Okay.
Through E.
Sure.
Comment?
Thank you, good suggestion. Okay, so let's do A through E. Anybody whose last name starts with an A through E?
Madam Chair, I'm not hearing anyone. Someone with a last name F through J?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do that. I, I did a map, John, thank you. So someone whose name starts with, from F to J, so that would be F G H I J. Anybody wish to speak? Seeing no one, hearing no one? And if you come, if you decide to speak later, just, then don't worry about the alphabet. What about K through O? K, L, M, N, O? All right. How about P through T? P, Q, R, S, T? All right, how about U through Z? Is anybody out there, Mr. Formicella? I know it's remote, but.
There are some people signed on. No one responded as you called out the various letters of the alphabet.
So you know what's the one, if you can see the names signed on, why don't you call somebody first?
Well, Madam Chair, if, if they don't want to participate, they likely not want their names read aloud.
Okay, fine, you're, you're the lawyer. So I don't want to adjourn this meeting or, yeah, adjourn the meeting if people want to speak.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I may suggest you make a final call for, for anyone wishing to speak during the it would be appropriate-
Sure. So let me go back over the, the letters. Anybody whose last name begins from A to E wish to speak? Anybody F through J wish to speak? K through O? P through T? U to Z wish to speak? Mr. Kellogg, any suggestion? I, I can adjourn the meeting. I just don't want to do that if people want to speak.
Seeing none, I would say it's appropriate to close the public hearing.
Okay, so I'm closing the public hearing at 7:06 PM. Okay, thank you very much. Alrighty. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we still need to adjourn the actual council meeting.
Correct.
I think she might have hung up.
She might have.
Are you still there? Mr. O'Rourke, ready to present?
I'm still here. I moved to adjourn Town Council meeting for February 18th at 7:08. Do I hear a second?
Well, hopefully, we have a quorum. Hold on, one, two, three, okay, we're good.
So I'll repeat, I make a motion to adjourn Town Council-
Jason Mauer, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.